A lot of people here. Nobody, there's not enough. There's not enough. Okay. Two. Welcome to the Rapid City Planning Commission meeting, April 10th, 2014. Some housekeeping items. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the agenda, there are speaker request forms to the left of the dais. Please fill out a request form with the agenda item number and you wish to speak to and hand it to the secretary. Cell phones and electronic devices. At this time, we'd like to ask that any member of the audience who has a cellphone or other electronic device that either it be turned off or turn the ringer to silence. If you need to take a call, please step out in the hallway so that the meeting will not be disrupted. We'll start with a consent calendar. Items one through five have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by a planning commissioner, staff member, audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of the planning commission are recommendations to the city council. The city council will make the final decision with the exception of the following items. Item three, 14 UR 005. Item four, 14 PD 006. The Rapid City Planning Commission actions on these items are final unless any party appeals the decision to the Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the community planning and development services office by the close of business on the seventh full calendar day following action by the planning commission. Are there any items, excuse me, one through five that staff would like removed? Any items that a planning commission member would like removed? Any items one through five that an audience member would like approved? The chair would entertain a motion then.
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve items one through five in accordance with staff recommendations. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. The consent calendar. Regular agenda items. Okay. Do we have a presentation? Kip.
Madam Chair, if we could take items six and seven together, please, they're associated, and then we're going to let Kip present item seven first.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Would you please do that?
Good morning. Item number seven is 14 CA 001, an amendment to the comprehensive plan to modify the major street plan by removing and realigning collector streets. This is the zoning map showing the existing zoning in the area. In the shaded areas, the area we're looking at. Aerial photograph of the area affected. And the side-by-side map. Okay. On the left, you'll see the existing current approved major street plan, and on the right is the modification. There's a removal of a collector's street that runs from St. Patrick's Street along Hawthorne Avenue and then bends up to the northeast and connects up to St. Joseph's Street just east of the School of Mines. School of Mines has indicated they have some development plans in the area that this does not fit with, so we have removed that portion connecting to the northeast and then realigned the collector's street that comes in from the west at the end of East Signal Drive. Brought that down to connect to the Hawthorne Avenue right-of-way where it connects with East St. Andrews Street just north of East St. Patrick's Street. And I am available for any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions? Karen.
Just to confirm the staff report, the public comment from the Hanson Group was resolved between...
My latest communication with the Hanson's, they are still discussing their options with School of Mines. They said it's progressing nicely. We're working to set up a meeting with the Hanson's to discuss what they would like to do with their portion of the property to the west of this. So at this time, they have no further objection.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve. Item number six and seven? Just a seven? Just seven? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Item number six?
Thank you. Item number six is the associated vacation of right-of-way for portions of Hawthorne Avenue located north of St. Andrews Street. You can see the zoning map, the areas around the vacation of request is on general commercial district, medium density residential district located to the west, Park Forest District located in the north. Aerial view of the property, it's undeveloped. You can see the School of Mines campus expanding to the north of the requested vacation. Exhibit showing the portion of the vacation. This item was continued from the March 27th planning commission meeting to allow the required notification to be met. In addition, we discussed the neighboring property owner expressed some concerns about the realignment of the collector's street, but the applicant used the continuation, the two weeks, to meet with the neighbor and the issues have been resolved as we discussed. One stipulation of approval was requiring that bicycle and pedestrian access easement be dedicated on a portion of this property to allow for a future bike and pedestrian path to be constructed on the property. The Public Works Department has indicated that access must be maintained throughout the property and transportation planning has indicated their need for the access easement. Development allotment agreement has also been submitted in order to secure access to those properties located in the north end of Hawthorne Avenue until such time as those lots can be consolidated with the vacated right-of-way. For all, for these reasons, or in all affected utilities have indicated their concurrence with this request. For those reasons, staff recommends that the vacation of right-of-way request be approved in conjunction with the comprehensive plan amendment and with the stipulation outlined.
Are there any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve item number six with stipulations and recommendations. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. Item number eight.
Thank you. Item number eight is 13, or 14 UR 007, a conditional use permit to allow an existing on-sale liquor establishment with an outdoor seating area. This is on approximately 0.1 acres of land located at 624 St. Joseph's Street. This area, or this location is known as the brass rail. Here you can see a zoning map of the property. It's located in central business district, central business district in all directions. Aerial view of the property. This area to the north there that's kind of in the shadow is the location for the requested expanded outdoor seating area. Look at the properties. Please note that this is for on-sale liquor establishment to be located on lots 20 and 21. Lot 19's not included in this request. Look at the inside of the suite. Brass rail's an existing establishment and they're looking, they're requesting to expand their establishment to an outdoor seating area to be located north of the existing suite indicated there. View of the railings that they do intend to put up in order to separate their seating area from the rest of the uses in that courtyard. Their existing sign. Here you can see that again, viewed on the, on the street. St. Joseph's Street looking to the west. View of the front of the property, you can see the sign posted in the window. This is a view inside the courtyard from standing in the courtyard looking out north towards Art Alley. If you're familiar with this area, you're aware of some concerns they've had in the past in terms of controlling the access to and from this area of the alleyway. You can see that they have installed a gate there. It's a pushbar gate so that it can be opened from the inside, but it cannot be opened from the outside, so people in the alley could not get into the courtyard. A look from that gate in towards the courtyard area. And the courtyard itself, if you're familiar again with this, this particular area of Art Alley, it's, in the past been, had a lot of graffiti and a lot of painting done in there. The owners in an attempt to try and clean up the courtyard area of, are trying to paint it, so you'll see the graffiti in this courtyard area is lessened, but they're still, you know, it's still there, but the owners are working on it. Another view of the courtyard inside, again, the painting, they're working to improve the, improve the area back there and the access into the brass rail is that door there. That will be the only establishment that will have access to the courtyard facility, and it will be through the interior of the brass rail only. It will not be, access will not be permitted through the back. View back towards the alleyway, or the entrance to the alleyway, and showing you the size of the proposed area. Excuse me. Now, the proposed on-sale alcohol uses for an existing bar, which has continued as a legally non-conforming establishment for a number of years. The central business district is viewed as the appropriate zoning classification for on-sale alcohol uses. Parking and landscaping are not required in the central business district. And for these reasons, staff recommends the conditional use permit to allow an on-sale liquor establishment with an outdoor seating area be approved with the stipulations outlined in the staff report, and we're available for questions at this time.
Are there any questions? Eric?
Do the other buildings that border this courtyard area take access from that, from that area? Is, are they going to be blocked off by fencing this?
No. Unfortunately, I don't have the ability to draw on this right now. Our system, our presentation system is down, but this is a good shot. You can see the, the courtyard that is being proposed is, is ending essentially at the, the building line there located next to that, or on the four wall there. That would be the lot property line, and that where the fence, is where the fence would go. The structures to the left of where that imaginary fence line would run are part of this suite, or this building, and no access is being taken from those structures. Every other structure that has access through this courtyard will maintain that access.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Madam Chair, I will be abstaining from consideration of this item.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Yes?
I just wanted to add that the police department did review this. One of the things that they brought to light was that with this activity in behind the building, it would be supervised, it would be cleaned up, and they saw that as a benefit and an asset to some of the other activities that they've had difficulty controlling. And their recommendation was very important to how we reviewed this as well, and that's one of the reasons why we are in support of bringing this outdoor use to this very small area.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded for item number eight. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item number nine. Amendment to the comprehensive plan.
Good morning. Today, we're considering adoption of Plan Rapid City, which is the new comprehensive plan. The first plan was adopted in 1949. It was called City Plan, and we've had three updates since then. The most recent was in the early 1980s. We have had many individual elements of our comprehensive plan updated since then, but today, we're looking at something that, you know, hasn't been done for many years. This plan is based on seven core values, and it weaves all of the essential comprehensive plan elements into all of those values, so it's not just one little piece. It's, it's a comprehensive plan, which is awesome. There are several implementation tasks that we're going to start working on, and some of them have already been undertaken. There are 21 identified immediate actions that we need to start on now before the end of the year, and then there are some near-term, which is, you know, the next two years, and then there are some longer-term, which is two to five years. And there are a couple key action items that we're going to start working on immediately. We're going to start developing a unified development code, which is going to consider, which is going to consolidate both the zoning code and the subdivision code into one. So that's another new item that's going to be great. We've got some, we're going to update the TIF guidelines that's going to better incorporate some affordable housing requirements that we need. It's, we're going to start working on priority-driven budget process, which is a totally new process for our community, so that's another exciting tool that we're going to start working on. There are a couple items that will keep our plan off the shelf. We're going to do quarterly progress reports. We're going to do an annual report that will consolidate any little items that we need to amend the comprehensive plan, you know, so that it's one time instead of several. We do have some opportunities for minor amendments, and then the major amendment will address with the annual report. And then it also identifies that we're going to need, again, a five-year update. But we've been working on this for the last year or so, and we recommend approval of this adoption. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Karen?
Hi. Thank you. I just wanted to go back to the amendment part. So if, if today, if somebody, or when this is passed, if somebody came in and wanted to, say, change the zoning, and they're in the wrong, the plan is not right, how is that going to work? The zoning and the comprehensive plan are going to go together?
Well, it kind of depends. You know, we have a new classification on our land use map. It's called a community, it's an activity center, whether it's a regional activity center or a community activity center. And depending on the development plan adopted, we can look to see how far out that area needs to go. Say, for example, currently it's a residential district and, or designation, and they want more commercial. It really depends on what that development plan proposes. Staff can, the director can authorize that change based on, you know, just the plan that was developed and the flexibility built into the, the plan now. And then, you know, if there's, if it's a major amendment where, you know, there's some huge discrepancies, it can go through with the zoning ordinance or the zoning change, or it can wait until the annual report. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have a question? Eric?
Patsy, I'm guessing the answer to this already, but implementation-wise, the, the city staff is going to have to carry a lot of the water to put those things in front of, you know, the different folks, city council, you know, that has to approve those actions. Are you happy with the implementation plan as is, or, I mean, I'm guessing you are since it's in front of us, but...
I, I think it's going to be great because it's not just our department that's going to be working on those implementation tasks. It's a whole community-wide plan that's going to have to come forward. So, for example, if somebody wants funding for a special project, we're going to look at those objectives that are in the plan to see if that's consistent. And there's, you know, another thing that it's looking at is consolidating all of the different funding committees, so that council can look at all of those together at one time instead of having three, or four, or five different groups coming at them with funding requests.
Great. And thanks for all your help over the past year.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We have another speaker. Karen Gunderson, would you like to speak? Please come forward and identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Karen Gunderson Olson. I live at 6241 Choke Cherry Lane. And I came this morning because I have been participating at various levels in this process. I went to at least one meeting where I was there and one other person, but I have been at some other meetings in which there was, I thought, an excellent representation of the community at large. And I don't come representing any particular organization, but I do, as you've moved through this process, I thought it's important for the arts community to be aware of what is going on, because those of us who, who live and work and see the enormous value of the arts in terms of the overall health and economic well-being of our community, we realize that, that planning and that a, a city that is structurally and architecturally interesting and exciting is a good thing for a community. In addition to that, I've really come at this process through a number of interests, one of which has been pedestrian and bicycle safety. For those of you who walk in this community, this is not, still not a very safe place to walk. I think a typical walker, people as they're driving in their cars, look and wonder why someone is walking, and they have various ideas of why they are doing that. So I think as we move forward, whatever their, however this comprehensive plan touches our community in terms of bicycling and walking, there just needs to be every possible effort made to be respectful of these two communities. In my own family, I am married to a bicycle commuter, and he can tell you some very interesting stories of conflicts with various other vehicles. And as we move forward, I think, and parking and various health issues are important to our community. Bicycling and walking, in addition to be a commuting process, they're also one of the healthiest ways to build regular exercise into your daily life. And so as we move forward, and as I have watched what has been going on with this planning process, I urge your continued support and recommendation to the council that those interests of those individual groups be considered highly, because we're talking about health, we're talking about vitality, we're talking about a younger generation that does bicycle, and that are concerned about the health and the, the emphasis. I find that, a number of years ago, I took to the, a trip with the city council to Boise, and there was a lot of conversation about knowledge workers. And the knowledge workers, I'm sure you're familiar with that term, are those who are, who are interested in creative thinking, and they are the folks who are in the, in the software industry. They are engineers of various kinds, and they are the thinkers that are the forward thinkers in our world at large. And those are the kinds of folks that we are interested in bringing to our community. So I certainly urge that as this process moves forward, and as you make recommendations to the council, those areas be given great consideration, and thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Any other comments or questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made and seconded for number nine. All those in favor, please say yes. Aye. Excuse me. Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. We have a sign code enforcement discussion. Time now?
Okay. Good morning. My name's Andy Levick, and I'm with the city code enforcement office. Just going to do a general sign code presentation here today. That's not working. There we go. There, we have on-premise, off-premise signs, sign brightness, and then just some general sign stats from code enforcement. Off-premise signage, it is not on the premise, is signage that's not on the premises. It is something that is advertising just a general product or service that does not belong to that property. On-premise signage is typically signage that's at gas stations, banks, something that is on, it is the sign that is on the property, and it is also advertising something that they are providing for you. Gas stations scrolling their gas prices, things like that. Sign brightness is a measurable quantity. That's one of the things that we do now is go through and just measure signage to make sure that the brightness is in compliance. There are 120, 189, sorry, total off-premise signs, and we've kind of got those broken out into 17 directional off-premise signs. Best examples of those are like the Days Inn or the Comfort Inn. They're technically not on that property. They're on an adjoining lot, but they don't necessarily advertise anything other than direct you to the main property. Off-premise signs, there are 168 of those, and those are your typical billboard-type signs. And there are six digital off-premise signs. Those primarily are owned by Lamar. There are four public-purpose ones, and they, they're off-premise, but they kind of fall into a different category, just the way we track them. And examples of those are Pressler Junction, The Gap. There's one on East St. Pat and on East North Street. Digital signage does not allow any motion of any kind. Those are the, these are the off-premise ones. The, a good example of that is just on Fifth Street over here by the city building. Those signs can change, but they do not have any type of motion to them. There's no scrolling. It just basically changes from one static copy to the next one. The messages can change no shorter, or no shorter than eight seconds, so they've got to have an eight-second hold time. Anything less than that, and that's something that we would flag. To date, we have not had any issues with that eight-second hold time. And then again, brightness, it's, it's something that's regulated. Up until about a year and a half, two years ago, that was not something that we had on the books. We do now, so we can go out, and if, if it is an issue and a sign is too bright, if we get a caller complaint, we'll go out and have that checked out. These are just a couple examples of the digital public-purpose ones. They do advertise off-premise. They are not on the properties themselves, and they're digital as well, but they are required to carry some sort of public purpose... Maximum sign for the electronic message centers, which are the on-premise ones, 60 square feet. They may incorporate some graphics, they may have some animated or scrolling messages. That doesn't mean full motion. That just means their messages are switching over from one to another. PowerPoint is, is a good example, when you see a screen, it kind of slides through on a PowerPoint presentation. That is kind of what the message centers are allowed to do as well. Again, they cannot have full motion. They can't have, basically a TV, if you're looking at a TV, and that's what you see on a message center, they can't allow that. Over the years, we've had one of those types of issues. We contacted them, and they, they immediately stopped that. Flashing is not allowed, and that's a repetitive change in brightness from a high to low intensity. There is no requirement on the duration of the copy change. On an off-premise billboard type sign, they have to hold that for eight seconds, and they cannot, they can't, on the, for the off, I'm sorry, on, no requirements for the duration of copy change in message. So they can scroll that through as quickly as they want. They don't have to hold it for eight seconds like the on-premise type people do. And then again, brightness is regulated for on-premise as well as off-premise. The brightness levels cannot exceed 0.3 foot candles above ambient light. There's a formula for how do you, how you measure that and quantify that. I won't get into it, you know, here because it's, it's, it doesn't necessarily apply unless, that's something that we can do out in the field. Brad Solon from Building Inspection actually follows up on, on doing some of the tests. And then last year, we had approximately 28 complaints that we had logged in. Most of those complaint issues were signs in the right of way, someone places it out on, on public property. Those signs are immediately taken, or we'll contact that property owner and say, "Look, you need to remove your sign." Illegal or unpermitted banners, you are able to get a temporary sign license or permit, so you can put those out there temporarily. But again, if we are aware of it, if it's something that we see, or somebody does tell us and say, "Can you go look at this banner? Can you go look at this issue?", we'll follow up on those and contact that individual. We did get a complaint last year on a flashing sign. We took a look at it, and it is not flashing. It was just a scrolling message. It did go through rapidly, so it's, it's understandable that what, what could be determined as a scrolling sign changing message could be flashing. Part of that could be a brightness type issue, too. And then again, we got, we did get one complaint for a brightness issue, which was followed up on. We had about nine signs, and Brad can discuss that here shortly, that were checked for brightness, and I believe three out of the, three or possibly even four of those were out of compliance, which were followed up with. If anybody have any questions?
Questions? Karen? Thanks, Andy. That, that's helpful for me. The on-premise signs are the ones that I have noticed mostly in the last couple of years, I guess. It seems like when we make a determination that they can do this or, you know, some regulation, and then they don't abide by it, my, my frustration is that if I turn it over, it seems like it never, doesn't change. But some of the things that I've noticed are the quick, quickness in how they change their message, and, and what you're saying is that's okay to do that?
For an on-premise, yeah, there is no requirement that they change that within a time period. It can, it can actually be continuous, where it just scrolls through, or the message pops up, and then, you know, two seconds later, they put another message up.
Right.
For, for an on-premise, I'm sorry, off-premise billboard type sign, it is eight seconds that they have to hold that up there and then switch it over quickly. There's no scrolling allowed or anything for off-premise. But on-premise, it's a little different.
Right. And, and the billboards, I haven't seen any real violations of those at all. I, I've looked at those, but it's the on-premise ones that I've noticed that are, are more flashing. And, and I'm glad you mentioned that about this, the, so many seconds, because I know there's one yesterday that I saw, one every second, it was a different message up there, and I thought, "How can anybody even read that?". But that's their business, I guess, if they want to do it that way. But it's the, it's the flashing ones, if they have like a star that goes burst out, is that considered flashing? Would you say that was flashing?
We will take a look at it. Yeah. It's kind of in that gray area, and I agree with you. I mean, it, it can fall into, is it animation? I mean, is it flashing? It's, if it's just a burst, let's say, like, I think you said, a star kind of bursts out onto the screen. If it's a repetitive one, then that's something that, yes, I would say we'd classify that as a flashing one. If it's just a singular burst and it's out, I don't know if we'd consider that necessarily flashing, but we would take a look at it regardless.
Okay. And as far as the, how, if you turn something in, and, you know, I call you or Brad and say, "There's this sign that's, to me, really bright", how effective is that going to be to resolve that issue?
Well, I'll, I'll let Brad discuss some of the sign brightness issues because he, he did follow up on some of those. But I know that when we contact somebody about their signage issues, primarily, and I think the topic on this one is the electronic ones, the brightness and the flashing and, and the message scrolling, whenever we contact somebody, it's generally because they're not aware of it. We do occasionally get phone calls, and I got one actually, I think just the other day, where they wanted to find out more information on what they can and can't do. And it's not an issue that they, they're violating something, they're just not aware of it. We'll contact people, let them know, "You can't do this, or you can't do that", and they generally will comply. I'm not going to say that, you know, it's 100%, but it's, it's, a vast majority of people are just uninformed about it.
Okay. If somebody violates a sign code and you've, you've told them and they changed their ways, and then a month later, they're back at it again, is there anything in the law that says, "Well, you've done this three times, now you're getting fined"? Or, I, I don't know what those results are, but it seems like there's some that are just continually just representing the right...
Right. If we have a repeat violator, someone that's just not, that knows what the rules are, just not willing to comply with us, and then, like you said, waits a month or two and then does it again, one of the tools in our toolbox is just to contact the police department. We will go out there with them and issue them a citation. Or turn that over to our attorney's office if, if that still doesn't work.
And, and what is the penalty for that? Is that very strong?
I'd probably let Allison discuss the legal issues on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Madam Chair, it might be helpful if we let Brad and Allison both give their presentations to fill in all the blanks, and then if you've got questions, that, so that we don't have the wrong person answering the wrong question.
Good morning. I'm Brad from Development Services, and I'm here to talk about the brightness of certain illuminated signs. Last year, the city attorney's office contacted staff and said, "What we need to do since after the ordinances have been changed to require a certain amount of limitations on illumination for certain signs?" We went out, I went out four times last year, went out last year in February, and the big push at that time was the, were the billboard signs and the public purpose signs, and the city owns one sign also, that it's, the, the use of that sign is up in the air. But anyway, I was just instructed to measure that one, too. All of the six digital off-premise signs were in compliance, and we know that the owner of those signs dims those signs at night. They're audit, they, they dim automatically. Also, the four public purpose signs were in compliance. I have not spoken with the owner of those signs. I don't know if they have an automated dimmer on those or not. Also, the city sign over here was in compliance, too. About a month later, I received another email from the city attorney, said we need to get out there and measure those signs. We had complaints on various signs at that time. This was in March of last year. We identified, we, one night, we went out and measured four signs. We found that there were three signs that weren't in compliance. The, the one off-premise sign that we checked was one that we had already checked a month earlier. It was still in compliance. There were three signs, one on Campbell, one down, and one downtown, and one in The Gap. We identified those as too bright. I reported back to the city attorney's office. I was told to go recheck those signs and to check one additional sign, it down, another sign that was downtown. The one sign on Campbell Street, we've been in contact with the owner and operator of that sign. As a matter of fact, I got an email from them yesterday, said that they've dimmed it down twice now. And so what we're going to do is we're going to go out and recheck that sign at night and see if it's in compliance at this time. There, there would be then two other signs that weren't in compliance last year. Probably what we should do is go back out on a, on a night when there's no moon and a clear sky, and, and re-measure it. My findings in, in, as a building inspector, there's a few things that you check for, with a light meter, emergency lights, exit light, illumination, the, the minimum amount of light necessary to exit a building, things like that. We've, we've got a light meter, and we check that kind of stuff. My experience with that is, is measuring these big signs outdoors, some of the signs are up in the air pretty far. You know, if we were going to try to take somebody to court, we'd want to make sure that we had measured them properly so that, like, we had a boom truck, so that we were measuring the sign right in front of the sign, that we had good readings for the ambient light and for the direct reading, and that we had some kind of a good record of how we measured it and what the measurements were. I'd think in that, because we kind of have a simple light meter, probably the best thing to do would be to get a better machine that can measure light in, in a more, you know, I don't know how to say it. It, it measures in whole numbers, and we need to get one that would measure, you know, more exactly what the, what the light readings were. So probably what we're going to do is, as soon as, now that the weather's better, we'll go out, measure the, measure the signs again, at least, at least the ones that weren't in compliance, and we'll be in contact with those people if they're not in compliance. And so, that's all I have.
Any questions? Karen?
Hi, I'm Allison Marsland. I'm one of the assistant city attorneys, and I actually handle, I'm the main contact in our office for code enforcement issues. I'm going to talk a little bit about what the code enforcement process would look like for a sign issue. And generally, unless it's a life safety issue, the goal of code enforcement is always going to be compliance. And so we try and work with people who are out of compliance as much as we can before we get to more heavy-handed tactics. So generally, as Andy indicated, the first step, once a complaint has come in, or if an officer has noticed on their own a violation, is to make verbal contact with the sign owner, whether that's via phone or in person, to tell them what the issue is and to request compliance. I believe the majority of the time, that actually brings about compliance. Sometimes it doesn't. So the next step would be a written letter, and Brad's office, the building official, is actually empowered under the sign code ordinance to take official action. So that letter would generally come from Brad's office. If compliance was still not gained after that, then it would come to our office, or PD would be contacted and a citation would be issued. Sometimes a citation would be issues, and that would be issued, and then our office is contacted. I mean, at that point, it's really sort of, what does this situation require? What's the best course of action to follow? If a citation was the first action in that case, Karen, you asked what the penalty is. You know, municipal ordinance violations provide for a fine up to $500 or jail up to 30 days. In a first offense situation, we're not going to be asking for jail, and we're not going to be asking for a 500, a $500 fine. So generally, the first fine that you're going to be subjected to is $120. But we do, if, have the ability, if there's a repeat offender, that we feel a stiffer fine is warranted, to go up to $500. But it's, I, I, with the caveat that that's in the court's discretion, you know, we can ask for that, but the judge isn't necessarily going to impose a $500 fine if we, if we ask for it. But if we can make the case that it's warranted because the person is a repeat offender, I would say generally, we would, we would get that. The stiffest enforcement allowed under the code is actually removal of the sign, but that's not an action that we've ever taken, it's not a road we've gone down, we haven't had a, a repeat offender to the level that we've gone down that road. And that, again, is Brad's office is empowered to declare a sign unlawful if it's not compliant and require that the sign be removed. And so that would be last resort, however. Are there any questions? That's kind of the process.
Karen? Okay. Thanks, Allison. I appreciate that, too. I think for, for me as a citizen, when I see a sign, I need to know for sure whether it's in compliance or not. So I, I don't want to call Brad or you folks to say that that sign is too bright, or that sign is scrolling. I think it's the scrolling part that I need to get a handle on. So if leaves are falling, or whatever they're doing, I don't want to turn something in that you folks are going to say, "Well, that's, that's in compliance". I don't want to be a, you know, a nagger about things like that. But if there's a sign that, when it goes from this description and then it bursts out to another description, if I understand correctly, that is in the gray area, and that might not be scrolling, or might not be a moving sign, but is leaves falling, or it's something like that, rockets bursting, those are, would you consider those more, you know, something that is not in compliance, or is that still a gray area?
I, I think all of the types of messaging that you're describing really are in the gray area, and so staff would need to go out and witness for themselves what is taking place when the message is being shown on the sign to verify whether or not it is flashing or animation. As Andy indicated, for the on-premise messaging boards, I, I think that it can seem as though they're out of compliance because the messaging is allowed to be, that they're not held to any number of seconds. So it can seem as though it's flashing when it's going very quickly. But I think the, the bursting situations or the falling leaves that you describe, I think staff would want to take a look at that and, and make a call as to whether or not it's in compliance or out of compliance.
Is there, is there some changes in our ordinances that would make that clearer so that the sign, people who have the signs and the citizens at large know the difference so that there's not that gray area?
Well, animation is very well-defined. What's allowed and not allowed in that regard, I, I think is well-defined. I'd want to see, our office would want to see the specific situations. I, I wouldn't recommend that at this time.
Okay. I, I think for me as a planning commission, excuse me, planning commission member, when people come and say they're going to put up a, a building and they're going to have an LED sign on there, my first fear is that it's going to be another one that's too bright, that's making too much noise, you know, not noise, it's, you know, but light and stuff. And it's in an area that I, I think should be toned down. And for, for us on the planning commission, if they meet the regulation of the law, then we kind of say, "Well, that's all right, let them do it" because they're, they're meeting the law. But yet, I have an issue with having more lights, more flashing, more things that distract drivers, that could potentially distract drivers. And I understand from a business point of view, you want to have people attract to your sign. You're going to do everything you can to get people to look at that sign. And so there's a, there's a disconnect there between the two, two issues. And I, I struggle with that, trying to make sure that I, I want to follow the law and want to, I don't want to punish somebody that is trying to, you know, run a business. But I also want to make sure that our, our drivers are safe and that we have less light overall in our cities. I, I don't want to be a Las Vegas strip, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
So I, I struggle with that. And if there's anything that we can do to improve our ordinances, to make it more clear for everybody so that, as a planning commission member or a city council member, we know this is, this is going to meet the letter of the law, and this is a safe situation for our, our citizens. That's what I'm, I'm trying to get to. And I appreciate what you've given us so far. I'll have to look at some of the signs again that I've seen over the time and, and try to tamper down my enthusiasm, maybe, but I appreciate what you've given us so far.
And we're always available for questions. So if you come across a sign, you know...
to make sure that our, our drivers are safe and that we have less light overall in our cities. I, I don't want to be a Las Vegas strip, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
So, I, I struggle with that, and if there's anything that we can do to improve our ordinances, to make it more clear for everybody, so that as a planning commission member or a city council member, we know this is, this is going to meet the letter of the law and this is a safe situation for our, our citizens. That's what I'm, I'm trying to get to, and I appreciate what you've given us so far. I'll have to look at some of the signs again that I've seen over the time and, and try to tamper down my enthusiasm, maybe, but I appreciate what you've given us so far.
And we're always available for questions, so if you come across a sign, you know, please get in contact with Building Services or Code Enforcement, or if it comes down to an ordinance question that they can't answer, please contact me in our office and we'll help you out.
Thank you, I'll do that.
All right.
Eric?
As it pertains to on-premise signs, maybe somebody with a better memory can help me, but I, I feel like there's a few planned developments where we've put that eight-second static requirement on an on-premise sign. Am I off-base here? Like, that car wash on Campbell is one that I'm thinking of, and I, I just don't remember.
You're, you've been around long enough to remember correctly. We have done that with some of the LED signage that Planning Commission has approved. Just most recently, what has been approved is that signage pursuant to the sign code be allowed, and we've stuck to that instead of implementing additional restrictions, but in the past, we have done that.
Is that taken into account then, when, when the officials go out and review the signs where that, those stipulations are, are put on them?
I'm Brad again. Have to remember that last year, when we met out, the four times and measured them, we went out on signs that were off-premise that we had complaints on. I haven't had a complaint on the signs that have been approved at eight seconds. I haven't, I've never been out and to check any of those, I've never had anybody call me, say they were too bright, they were too, changing message too quick or anything like that.
Good.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
In other words, when anyone comes, calls in and has a complaint on a property, our procedure is, is we look to see whether or not the use is permitted, what's the zoning, has there been a permit issued, if it's in a planned development, if it's in a conditional use. So we do a little background too, so that we are prepared to know what the Planning Commission and/or the permits restrictions were. So I hope that answers your question, Eric.
Any other questions?
I've got one other one.
Eric?
Signage in general, there, you know, we had a couple ballot issues a year ago that were, that got pretty good support from the community, that have since had their teeth removed to a certain extent in the courts. So I, to echo what Karen was saying, there's kind of a disconnect here between, it seems like what people want and what's allowable by the law. Is there any effort right now to sort of get the, you know, walk the line with our regulations, to, to provide something that meets the law, but also meets what, you know, what it seems like the public is looking for as far as restricting signage?
Eric, I might be able to answer that. We, as Patsy had mentioned, we are going to take a look at rewriting our zoning ordinance and our subdivision code and putting them into a single unified development code. Sign ordinance is part of that. And I've been asked by the mayor to take a look at how we can use our comprehensive plan with respect to off-premise signage in particular, and within the letter of the law, put in some further controls. We have identified entryway corridors and revitalization corridors within our plan. I think that's a good place to start, because our community has told us, "These are important highway corridors or collector arterial corridors." And so we can take a look at putting something into place that, that may be a little bit more restrictive than, say, just a basic collector in town. So that's one way, one thing we're going to look at, but that's not going to preclude us from putting in further restrictions that the public wants. So, if you give us some time, obviously, we'll be coming back to you with any changes to the zoning warrants, including the sign code. We'll bring back some ideas and, and have you tell us what you think is adequate.
Any other questions? Karen?
I just have one other quick question. Vicki, you mentioned something about if there's a, if we've had a conditional use permit or a planned development that says, "This on-premise sign should only change its message every eight seconds." And, and that sign is one that somebody has turned in, does Brad go then to you and look to say, "Is this in a planned development," or how does that work so that he knows that this has an additional restriction on it? And I'm assuming that that restriction will stay until we change the, the conditional use permit or something. Is that correct?
You are correct, and, and yes, Brad's staff does come to us when there are issues with signage, and, and as importantly, they pull the files themselves and take a look at it. And then they, they are put on notice that it needs to be in compliance with the planned development or the conditional use permit, or a major amendment would have to be brought forward.
Okay.
And then that would come back to the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Any other questions? I think these have been good discussion questions, because I think we all get sometimes a little off-keel, and it's good to get back on and be on the same page, so thanks for your questions and discussion. Any other items? If not, an entertain a motion to adjourn? Motion's been made in seconded to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned.